All right, I have 6:00 AM on my time.
About PM.
Oh, my gosh. Words are hard today, everyone. They are 6:00 PM. So, let's, uh, let's roll. I hope it's not 6:00 AM. I missed the Packer game. All right, 6:00 PM. Let's do this. All right, Becky, call the roll, please.
Bernard.
Here.
Crowley.
Here.
Dunahy.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Robic is excused. Schlinkert.
Here.
Tranto.
Here.
Wetzel.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Approval of the agenda?
I have no changes.
Public comment received none.
None.
Approval of the minutes of common council meeting, August 28th, 2025.
Other person, Wetzel. Other person, Schlinkert.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Becky, call the roll, please.
Crowley.
Aye.
Dunahy.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Schlinkert.
Aye.
Tranto.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Bernard.
Aye.
Passes. Sent agenda, September 2025 department reports, Q and A with department heads.
No, no one's got any questions? I got one for Steve. Yeah. Yeah, I was just looking for, um, do we have like a timeline on Tommy's car wash? How long that'll take for them or what their plan is when they're gonna look to open or?
That is a great question. Believe it or not, it's gonna take much longer than expected. It's gonna be next spring. It's not gonna be done by the end of the year. There's a lot of water infrastructure. If you go out there today like I did, boy, it's quite a hole. And Zimmerman Plumbing is doing the plumbing. They're gonna have their hands full. So, there's a lot of intricate things that you would not think would go in a car wash, but this is not an ordinary car wash. This is a car spa. It's a, you know, it's really something when you see it and it's done. So, not gonna be done until the spring.
Okay, and then the other question I had was, uh, do we have any update on when the Rolling Prairie apartment complex, uh, is going to be started?
I talked to them the other day. They expect to have a ribbon cutting, groundbreaking, um, by the end of the year. I think it's gonna be like a winter groundbreaking like we had, uh, reminiscent of Rolling Prairie when Phase One broke ground. Snow was flying and I think it was December. But they told me point blank, it's gonna be very early next year when they break ground on that $20 million development and start construction.
Other person, Schlinkert.
Actually, I have a question on Tommy's car wash, too. I'm wondering, I know that, you know, development happens on its schedule, but I'm wondering what, if anything, we do when we're going to develop in a place where traffic is going to be heavily impacted like by the school? Um, I'm sure you've heard some issues and complaints, um, as maybe everyone has. Why now? Why at the beginning of school? Um, what is the response to that? And how can we look to get permits in the right timeframe to not have that?
That's a delicate question, and there's no real easy answer. I think that the plan commission coupled with staff, you know, led by the, the capable efforts of Phil Livingston, really carefully guide the process so that we don't, um, conflict greatly with, uh, the, the regular traffic flow. Uh, sometimes it can't be avoided, and so it comes down to whether the city wants to move ahead as soon as possible with this, keeping in mind that the timeline that any developer gives you is always delayed. You look at, uh, the Madison Public Market, it's a bad example, but it's a good example because if you watch what's going on there, everything should have been done a year and a half, two years ago, and everyone's saying, why are we still waiting two years later? Uh, but, um, there's parts, there's contractors, and everything runs late. So, the optimum, we were hoping that we would approve this much early in the year, and it would be under construction, you know, during the summer, um, and much of it would be alleviated before school started. That wasn't the case. The bidding process took longer. That was a big thing. So, I wish I had an easy answer. It's a great question. I think staff is really sensitive and cognizant, and, and that part of the city where the, the high school comes out is just, it was poor planning. It's one way in and one way out.
And I'll certainly jump in to help you out there, Steve. Obviously, a lot of the permitting aspects for these developments doesn't necessarily get approved just by the city. Um, there are some state approvals that I think took a little bit longer than what they were expected to, um, before they were able to submit those permits to the city. Um, I will give Holt's, uh, some kudos on this. They, they obviously understood that they had an issue with closing down a street that is, has such heavy traffic on it. Um, they met with both, um, my, my staff as well as the school board, um, to discuss, you know, those implications of obviously closing it down, and they've actually modified their schedule to do it during times of lesser traffic between eight. So, they, they have it in their mind. They're trying to get out of there as quick as possible. They know it's, unfortunately, like all construction, that's exactly what it is.
Well, I think that's very good discussion, good talking points. Thanks.
Other person, Green.
I guess just on that topic, um, when is the road, the back, back way off of Hamilton gonna be open coming over to CX?
We don't have a timeline on that. They have started their paving operations, doing some fine grading and getting ready for paving. However, it's just not as simple as once the asphalt's in, opening it up. There's gotta be street signs, uh, there's gotta pavement markings, there's gotta, um, everything that the developer's doing as far as restoration done.
I was just thinking, I was thinking through my head when she was talking about that, it's, that would alleviate some of that traffic, um, going back the back ways. So.
Arguably, the problem is there's one way in and out of the high school.
Yeah.
And you have all the most inexperienced drivers in the city using it twice a day. I just, speaking from experience here, like, so that is, that is a problem.
All righty. Yeah.
I have a question on finance. Um, uh, RFP for the taxis. So, again, we haven't received any responses. When are they due?
The 15th.
Of this month? Okay. And have we received any yet? Okay, just checking. Okay. Okay, cool.
Department report, Phil Livingston, Director of Public Works, 2025 project updates, 2026 project planning, utility updates, and personnel.
I'll try to keep it quick to get everybody home for the Commander's game. Uh, as Becky mentioned, I wanted to give you guys an update on some of the 2025 projects. Um, as you know, uh, as everybody was fully affected by it, uh, the US 51 Utility Reconstruction and DOT Resurfacing Project took place earlier this summer. Uh, that obviously included the full utility replacement ahead of the DOT resurfacing from East Pleasant to East, or to Edgewater Streets. Uh, A1 Excavating came in and did that work for us. They completed their work in early January, early July, which was approximately three to four weeks ahead of schedule, um, which was great. We were able to, uh, turn that over to the state ahead of time. We're currently finalizing quantities with A1, uh, for contract closeout later this month. Uh, DOT work was then completed in August. Unfortunately, following construction, we found four roof drains that were not connected to the city storm sewer. Um, the original drains were connected to the city sanitary sewer, so they were, um, not found during the construction. Um, so we're working with Veerbicker Engineering on potential modifications. This is, hopeful to have something brought to council here either this month or early this month. Uh, once we got 51 underway, we moved on to our, uh, standard crack fill and chip seal projects. Uh, crack filling, uh, for those of you that have seen it, is just tar filling of the existing roadway cracks throughout various parts of the city. Rock County Seal Coating performed that work for us in late July, uh, which was then followed up immediately by chip seal, which is a emulsifier spray followed by a fine aggregate placement over all the roadways throughout the city. That work was awarded to Scott Construction, and that work was completed in August. Um, one that we're really proud of that took place earlier this year was the resurfacing of Northridge, American Legion, and Schneider Street. Um, that was just a standard resurfacing project, uh, on Northridge Drive from New Pineary to American Legion, American Legion from Northridge to Walmar Parking Lot, and Schneider Street from Albert Hartle. Uh, we awarded that contract to Tri-County Paving. Um, these projects typically consist of removing the asphalt pavement on the roadway, and then we go through and replace the base course aggregate underneath. However, uh, with this one in particular, we removed the asphalt and found really good base. Um, a project that typically would last three weeks lasted about a week, um, because we were able to pave on some of that existing surface. Um, so obviously, it allowed a significant time and monetary value saved. Um, that monetary value, we kind of push forward then and do a bunch of asphalt regrind down at the Morgan Street site, and then that saves us money on future, uh, roadway projects, so we're really happy. Um, that project was completed in late August. Something that's ongoing, um, that I've spoken to a number of, uh, officials about is the sidewalk reconstruction in 2025. Beardsley Concrete, uh, is working on replacement of damaged sidewalk throughout, uh, various, uh, locations throughout the city. Um, work is underway, and that's expected to be poured out by the end of the day tomorrow. So, then they'll follow up next week and. Uh, anybody that lit, that travels up through Slyfer Streets may be aware we are reconstructing Woodcrest Drive. Um, this is the replacement of Water Main along Woodcrest from Slyfer to Winnebago. Uh, this work piggybacks what was completed as part of the 2024 Slyfer Street Reconstruction Project. Uh, this work was awarded to Egbert Excavating. Um, work began early September and has a expected completion date in mid-October. Um, we have seen a little bit slow of a start with that project, partly because we requested them to come in kind of in the fall so we could get the 51 project completed before they came in, so we weren't double dipping resources. So, we're happy that they're getting going now. Um, that concludes everything for 2025. Um, it's hard to believe that construction season's coming to an end because we are in full swing moving into our next year's projects and even the year after that. Um, tonight, we will have a Design Services Award for East Pleasant Street Reconstruction. Um, this is one that we have earmarked for 2026 pending some borrowing capacity, uh, that we'll discuss at a future Finance Meeting. Uh, that work will include the utility and roadway replacements between DeWitt Street and Hamilton Street. Um, there's a number of utility deficiencies that are the driving force for this project, um, and we've worked with, say, on developing a scope for it. Also, tonight, we'll be bringing forward Design Services for the West Cook Street Utility Reconstruction Project. Um, this one is fairly similar to what we did earlier this summer for 51. Um, we're looking to do full utility replacements ahead of the DOT resurfacing project, uh, from the Wisconsin River Bridge, Wisconsin Street. Uh, we're continuing discussions with the DOT to allow that work to take place, place just prior to the resurfacing project, much like what we did for 51. Uh, historically, the city had done utility replacements a year ahead of time, uh, kind of providing the double burden to the public. We closed the road down one summer, we get our utility work done, we get it back opened up, and then the following summer the DOT comes in. Um, in discussions with the DOT, we said that we don't really like that, and we want to kind of minimize, you know, the impact it might make for a longer project, but it's just one project. So, we're continuing those conversations, and because of that, we wanna get our Design Services contract underway so they can be a part of those conversations. Something else that's coming down the pipeline is County CX Resurfacing. That's intended to take place in 2027. Both the city and the county submitted a bill grant application in 2023 for the resurfacing of that. That grant was approved, uh, for the construction taking place in 2027. Um, the county will be funding, um, a majority of that project as a majority of that roadway falls in near destruction. Um, and as long as they can provide the funding in 2027, that is still on track. Uh, with that, though, we have a number of sidewalk replacements, uh, that will need to be done prior to that to be eligible for those funds. Um, so what we're looking to do is actually do another year of sidewalk next year in lieu of alleys, basically flipping them. So, um, 2026 will be a sidewalk year as 2025 was, and then we do two years of alleys in a row. Combinate that. Another one that comes up, uh, quite often are our traffic signals through town. Um, just had a conversation with Jesse on that and how our aging infrastructure makes it difficult to modify timings, uh, as well as, uh, keep some safety at some of those intersections. Um, we've submitted historically for the past three years grants, uh, through the DOT's SISP program, um, and we've been awarded them every year. Um, so at this point, we have every single intersection that has traffic lights, um, on the schedule to be replaced between now and 2030. Um, 2025, we are anticipated to do sections of New Pineary and Slyfer and New Pineary and Collins. We put those out for bid in late 2024, uh, and did not receive any bids. We then followed up and put it out for bid then again in early 2025 and did not receive any bids. Um, so we've kind of gone back to the drawing board. We've modified a few of the construction schedules for them. We're seeing out for bid by for 2026 construction, and then subsequently, um, we'll try to do two signals each year following that. Uh, utility updates. Uh, obviously, the big one that you guys have all been a part of is the wastewater treatment facilities upgrades. Uh, Strand is finalizing their state plans for approval, uh, for construction to begin this fall. Uh, contracts are being assembled for distribution to Stab and the city in that $46 million contract, and we have a contract coming forward tonight for some of the material testing associated with that, which is to get this project underway. Couple other capital updates regarding utilities. Uh, software number two, Media Rehab, uh, that we approved earlier this year has been completed. The West Carroll Street pump replacements have been completed. The levee pump and controls replacement is currently being scheduled. We approved that last month. Um, parts are ordered, and we're just waiting for those to come in. And then we are also working on finalizing a request for proposal for a new standby generator replacement. Uh, we purchased the generator earlier this year, um, but the actual install we have to put out for. Um, that work is expected to take place early next year. Uh, we have another capital project that's coming up, which is the Armstrong Street Control Panel Replacement. Uh, we've had a few issues with that control panel, but it is in working order. Uh, that was originally intended to take place in 2025. However, uh, we've gotten some, um, more engineers' estimates on it, and that's exceeding what we had included in our capital plan, um, so we'll look to actually push that into 2026 and account for those. Um, on that same front, we have a number of personnel changes throughout the Public Works and Utilities Department. Um, as many of you know, Tony Bortz retired in late June at a position posting for the wastewater utility foreman, and that closed on August 1st. We, uh, have offer, offered and had an accepted offer for that position from Aaron Torgerson. Uh, he is a current wastewater, uh, utility operator with us. Um, he'll be stepping into that role starting next week. Um, he's been with the city for, uh, only six months, but before that, he was the lead operator in Partyville, so we're really excited to step into that role. Um, obviously, with that, that opens up a vacancy for his position as a wastewater utility operator. Um, we have that posted, and that position vacancy will end. Big one, uh, is Jared Royal left the city in mid-June. The position posting for the utility manager, uh, will be closing on the 19th. We've had a handful of applicants apply for that, so we're really looking forward to starting the process on, on getting them. Um, in other news, Municipal Services Crew Person, uh, we are still down one crew person moving into 2025. We're looking to implement our part-time plow operators like we did last year, uh, to augment some of those, um, duties during snow season, um, which is shown from the people that held those positions last year. So, we're looking forward to getting them back, uh, on the docket in the event that we need them in the snow. Uh, and then the last thing that I have is airport maintenance. Obviously, with no airport manager out there, we've continued our, uh, general airport maintenance through the Department of Public Works. Um, everything has gone great. Um, we've cleaned and we've done normal maintenance duties out there, uh, on a weekly or bi-weekly basis to make sure everything's running smoothly, and we haven't had many complaints. Uh, we've also begun discussions with the local handyman service for any building service repairs moving in. Anybody have any questions regarding engineering or public works? See a lot of hands, great.
Um, uh, with the stoplights, what is it that we're not getting bids on it?
The timelines have been, uh, pretty difficult with those. Um, some of the components take upwards of, um, like 30 weeks to get. Um, so when we bid it out in the spring of this year, I think that that was the main component because we had a deadline to get that. Obviously, the, the summer construction season was over. I think that was a little bit too tight of a schedule, um, and then outreach the first go around. Obviously, since putting those out and not getting the responses that we wanted, we've really kind of pounded the pavement and have reached out to some, some local area, hopefully give us a price on them and, and we're gonna stick with that.
I'm at, um, is there a reason why we do two a year for, is it the way that the funding was secured? Like?
Yeah, so the, um, so the SISP grants, um, initially, the city applied for all eight of our lighted intersections. Um, the DOT came back to us, I think in 2022 and said, these are great, um, but you can't apply for eight intersections. Um, you can apply for two each year. Um, so we, we basically, that's what we did, started applying for two each year.
So, do we have approval for all eight at this point?
We have approval of, uh, of the award.
And the grant, though, can only be redeemed then two per year? Is that, like, can we just do all eight at once now because we've gone through and gotten the grant?
So, the grant has stipulations. You list out when your design takes place, and you list out when the construction takes place. Um, that's on a state fiscal year schedule, so there is some minor play to it. Um, obviously, state fiscal year for 2026, we're in that right now. Um, and then it extends into mid.
And we haven't missed any of our opportunities because they weren't, we weren't finding people to do the work?
We, we did miss that one, um, but we, we kept the DOT in, uh, through that entire process, um, so it does not jeopardize our grant.
Okay. Okay, cool.
Other person, Bernard.
Uh, I see the note here that the costs associated with that storm were about $50,000. I just wanna say, I think you guys did a phenomenal job. Everybody in the city who contributed and helped out, uh, the police, fire, the Department of Public Works cleaning up that storm. Everybody's working in hard hours, long hours, off-hours, so it's just really appreciated, I think, by everyone.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I know, uh, you know, my guys with the Public Works Department are very happy to be completed with brush and have, have some breaks, um, because unfortunately, as soon as we finished our, our brush pickup for the storm, the following week was the, the regular brush pickup.
Are we able to take any insurance proceeds on that?
So, we are submitting a claim to the Wisconsin Disaster Fund.
Okay.
Typically, we aren't able to do that because we don't hit that $50,000 limit. I think it's $47,000. Um, we're, we're gonna be well above that, obviously, with this. Um, so we are filing a claim with them.
Thank you.
Got a question. Uh, so the CX project, is that gonna be from just 51 to Silver Lake? Or is that gonna also be across 51?
I believe that, that does extend up a ways.
Over or past tractor supply?
Correct.
Okay.
That's technically part of the.
Okay. New business, finance, and administration, discussion and possible action on claims.
Other person, Bernard.
Move to approve $792,757.32 in total paid unpaid debt claims.
Other person, Green.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Becky, call the roll, please.
Dunahy.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Schlinkert.
Aye.
Tranto.
Aye.
Wetzel. Bernard.
Aye.
Crowley.
Aye.
Passes. Discussion on possible action, surplus property, office and computer equipment.
So, in your packet, you have a memo regarding some old desk components. Um, we have some partitions and an old desk that is pretty much kind of been taken apart to get it out of a room. Um, file cabinets, bookcases, we have a bunch of binders, so if anyone's in need of binders. Uh, computer equipment consists of some old tough books from the Police Department. We have a few printers and a bunch of monitors that were replaced with the garage project, and then we got monitors here also. So, we would look to list those on surplus if there's any value. Otherwise, we will donate or junk accordingly if these are declared surplus.
Other person, Green.
I make a motion to put office equipment into surplus.
Other person, Wetzel. Any further discussion?
I have a, yeah, I have a question on the computers. Is there like a standard to, um, reboot them, clear their?
Right now, it's mostly monitors.
Okay, there aren't any actual.
But if there's anything that's a tower or?
Yeah.
That's all gets wiped out, and we've also done e-sight.
Okay, good. And then I have one other question. Um, if, so the binders, uh, it's not a question, it's a statement, the high school can almost always use binders for a bunch of their programs, so if you're looking for a place to offload them.
We used to box everything in the binders in the basement, and so when we went to shred it, we had to take everything out of the binders. We had 180 boxes of shredding.
Oh, yeah. And I mean.
Get a hold of them and see if they want.
Questions? Seeing none, Becky, call the roll, please.
Green.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Schlinkert.
Aye.
Tranto.
Aye.
Wetzel. Bernard.
Aye.
Crowley.
Aye.
Dunahy.
Aye.
Discussion on possible action, cameras at Riverside Park.
So, the charters of freedom, uh, structure is complete. Light, electrical is complete, lighting is complete. Uh, only thing that's not there is the documents themselves, but those will come around the time of the swearing in or the dedication ceremony on the 20th.
You said the documents are there?
They're not there. They will come around the 20th.
They are there. I was just there today.
They, oh, they put them in. Okay. Awesome.
I was just there today.
Cool. One step closer. Yeah. And we like to add some cameras to not only watch, um, the, the new structure, but also help provide some traffic, um, insight for the Police Department. So, what's quoted for you tonight is, um, electrical work, which was done by, proposed to be done by the same people who did the work on the monument itself, you know, the inside ball, so it'll make it a little bit quicker and a good price. It came into what we're expecting. And then the cameras we're proposing also, um, align with ones already in place, so it keeps it unison across the city. And so, the grand total for the whole work is $12,500, and if the council agrees, we would, um, fund that through interest that we have gained, um, from our capital account. So, that's a good use of one-time funds.
Other person, Green.
I make a motion to approve, uh, bearings for the camera work in H and M Electric at a cost of not to exceed $12,500.
Other person, Paul. Any further discussion?
Um, can Parkland funds be used as they were for building?
It would be. Um, we felt rather than taking this, it got brought up at the last council meeting. Out of capital, and it'll.
Other person, Bernard.
I'd rather use interest anyway because the Parkland funds are really getting depleted. I'd rather use interest anyway because the parkland funds are really getting depleted.
Any further discussion? Give a first and a second. Becky, call the roll, please.
Paul.
Aye.
Slankert.
Aye.
Trantow.
Aye.
Wutzl. Bernander.
Aye.
Crowley.
Aye.
Dunahy.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Legislative or regulatory, discussion of possible action taxi cab operator application, Kyle A. Ralph. The application and the denial letter are in the packet. It was denied per the police chief due to inaccurate, inaccurate and incomplete application history. If denied, Mr. Ralph will be sent a letter stating thirty days to request review of the initial determination to deny the license. That will be held by common council. He has the option of having it either in open or closed session and he will be able to present evidence as to why the license should be granted.
All the person Crowley.
I'd like to make the motion to deny Kyle A. Ralph's operation.
All the person Paul. Any further discussion? Becky, call the roll, please.
Slankert.
Aye.
Trantow.
Aye.
Wutzl. Bernander.
Aye.
Crowley.
Aye.
Dunahy.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Municipal services, discussion of possible action on contract award material testing services wastewater treatment plant improvements project.
So in associating, in association with the wastewater treatment plant facilities improvements project, the city is required to provide a certified material tester onsite to ensure foundation components are being installed per the project specifications. Giles Engineering performed the soils evaluation of the wastewater treatment plant facility, which was incorporated into the design of that project. Strand Engineering worked with Giles to provide a comprehensive proposal for the materials testing services associated with construction. The materials testing services were included in the initial estimates for that project and we recommend contract approval to Giles Engineering in the amount of three thousand eight hundred. Essentially, they'll be onsite anytime there's foundations poured, anytime that sub base needs to be tested, et cetera, to make sure the project spec as well as state spec.
All the person Green.
I make a motion to approve the contract for Giles Engineering in the amount of thirty-two thousand eight hundred sixty dollars.
All the person Slankert.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, oh, you have a second.
Need a second before this. All right. All the person Crowley?
I'll second.
Okay. All the person Slankert.
Thank you. There's a range in there, so it's thirty-two eight sixty to thirty-six one forty-six is what they're, they're saying it's going to cost and they have a, you know, full component breakdown. So I just want to make sure that we understand, how does, how do we go from the thirty-two eight sixty to the higher amount?
Thirty-two eight sixty is the estimated amount for the contract. They're saying it can go up to that thirty-six. That's not the intention, but with our procurement policy, if we do have to write a minor grant to it, it is still budgeted, something that would need to come in. Small.
Okay, so the approval at the, the lower level is appropriate?
Correct.
Knowing that it could go up to the higher number?
Correct.
Any other questions? First and a second. Becky, call the roll, please.
Trantow.
Aye.
Wutzl. Bernander.
Aye.
Crowley.
Aye.
Dunahy.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Slankert.
Aye.
Passes. Discussion on possible action contract award East Pleasant Street reconstruction.
So East Pleasant Street from DeWitt to Hamilton has been narrowed down as the next logical candidate for road reconstruction in the city. It has a Pacer rating of two, which means that it's a priority one category for the surface pavement. Additionally, there are a number of utility deficiencies on this segment of roadway. The water main was initially installed in the nineteen forties and fifties using that ductile iron, which is now well past its useful life and the storm sewer is not adequately sized for the capacity needs of the year. Like all road reconstruction projects, the sanitary sewer will be televised prior to any design to determine if we can, let's say, in spot repairs or if the whole segment needs to be redone. With that, we've worked with MSA Professional Services to come up with a scopy, scope of the project and they provided a design proposal in the amount of one hundred and one thousand, one hundred dollars to include both the design specification documents associated with the reconstruction. We do have this design component included in our twenty twenty-five capital plan at a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars and we recommend approval of the design contract with MSA Professional Services in the amount of-
All the person Green.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for the MSA Professional Services in the amount of one hundred and one thousand, one hundred dollars.
All the person Dunahy.
I will second that.
All the person Bernander.
Do we usually get multiple bids on this?
We've kind of taken a step back from getting multiple on design service contracts. We've vet that process with both last year's projects, the past few years' projects, as well as upcoming projects to determine if they're within one another, as we'll see with the next item on the agenda. Similar in scope, one's a little bit longer. To determine that it is still good pricing. The problem that we've seen over the years of going forward with our services is it's all predicated on that, to where sometimes we're working first time and someone that may not be as well. And we're running into issues with that. We're also looking to, with these design firms in hopes of getting some help on future grant cycles and, you know, assisting us with minor issues because we have a working relationship with that, to where we can pick up a phone and they'll drop everything because we're-
Other question? First and second. Becky, call the roll, please.
Wutzl. Bernander.
Aye.
Crowley.
Aye.
Dunahy.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Slankert.
Aye.
Trantow.
Aye.
Passes. Discussion on possible action, a contract award, State Highway Thirty-three utility improvements.
So back in twenty twenty-two, we did enter into a state municipal financial agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for the resurfacing of State Trunk Highway Thirty-three or West Cook Street from the Wisconsin River Bridge to West Wisconsin Streets. The resurface of this project is intended to take place in twenty twenty-seven or twenty twenty-eight, dependent on state funding, much like we did for USH fifty-one. After we entered into that agreement, we went, investigated the existing utilities to determine if any replacements were necessary. No surprise there, they are. We need to do a full utility replacement, much like we did with fifty-one, and that is typically done a year prior. Now, obviously with that, as I mentioned in my report earlier, we're trying to do this at the same time as the state to limit the impact and we're continuing those conversations with the DOT. Going back to the utility reconstruction at that time in twenty twenty-two, when it started coming up on our capital plan for planning of the utility reconstruction as well as the pavement, started working with Veer Bicker Engineering. They provided us estimated cost for the construction and they provided us updated cost for that over the past four years. They did provide us a comprehensive design proposal in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and we're looking to move ahead with them. Typically, these designs take place a year before construction happens. However, with the added components of DOT conversations, we want to get someone under contract to begin, coming to those meetings with staff, so the designs can work in conjunction. Obviously, with that, there, there is no money allocated in our capital plan in twenty twenty-five, but it is included in our twenty-six outline and any monetary components that would take place in twenty twenty-five would be paid utilizing the remaining design funds associated with the East Pleasant Street reconstruction project. We are recommending approval of the design services contract to Veer Bicker Engineering in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
All the person Green.
I make a motion to approve the design service contract for Veer Bicker Engineering in the amount of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars.
All the person Wutzl. Any further discussion? All the person Slankert.
Is there a pay schedule that's normally included in these then and are we sure that they're not going to bill us for more than the difference in the last contract during twenty twenty-five?
So Veer Bicker is again, one of those engineers that we, we have a relationship with. They're well aware of what we have available in this year's funding package. A majority of that design work will be twenty twenty-six, though, so they will not exceed what we have remaining.
So do we need that in this contract at all?
In my estimation, no, we can certainly add.
I'll defer to, I guess, your relationship with them. I would normally prefer to see a pay schedule of when they expect the payments, especially if it's going to be over, you know, extended period of time.
My recommendation would be no.
Second, any further discussion? All right, Becky, call the roll, please.
Bernander. Crowley.
Aye.
Dunahy.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Slankert.
Aye.
Trantow.
Aye.
Wutzl. Passes. Parks and Recreation, discussion, community room rental.
Yes, so Jen and I are stepping on in for Toby and Mike who are out at some training tonight to help continue the conversation about facility rental for the new community room at our shared Public Works and Parks and Rec facility. So the facility's been up and running now for a while and we've put pen to paper to continue moving forward to develop a rental form and process for this. It's our first room for the parks, a little different than our pavilions and what we have here tonight would then provide some additional revenue as, as rented. Residents would be charged a hundred and fifty a night, or, or use, excuse me, and then non-residents are two hundred. And that's in line with some comparables that Toby looked around the surrounding area and the form itself is based on what we use for the park pavilions and the policy is new. We developed, that is a team for this new room since it's different than anything else we have so far in their, in their deck of rentals. So we're here tonight is to continue the conversation, see if any council members have feedback, thoughts on the form, the policy and such that we can take back on behalf of Parks and Rec to work into the final draft that would then go to legal for review and then back to the common council at a subsequent meeting for approval. With that, I'm happy to take anyone's thoughts if you, if you have any, any feedback.
All the person Slankert.
I have a list.
All right, we'll take it.
Um, I would like to see that in addition to them signing for their waiver of liability, that they have signed, that they read and accept the rules. In the waiver of liability, the last paragraph, the last sentence of the first paragraph has parties, P-A-R-T-I-E-S, it should be parties, P-A-R-T-Y apostrophe S. Are there any limits to who can rent this?
So just like our park pavilions, it's, this anticipates it's open to the public, resident, non-resident, it could be a nonprofit, business, school. We do throw in a stipulation that if it's something that's open to the public, that they have to complete a special event application, so it's, they have to then provide additional insurances and information to use it.
Do we need the people who are going to rent it to abide by some sort of a code that they won't, let's just say, hold a, an inappropriate event in our facility, like a segregated event or anything like that? Throwing it out there. I don't know, but just throwing out ideas.
Well, I, I think we do have to be a little careful and that might be a question for legal, but yeah, if, if we start, we got to be careful from a governmental perspective. If we start telling certain groups that they can't do events because we object to-
Their mission.
Their mission, that's kind of a First Amendment problem and I, I mean, I'd probably defer to your judgment, but in general, we should be pretty careful about saying, well, we don't like your mission, so we got to be a little careful.
Agreed, but, but can we, can the people that we are renting it to discriminate based on sex, color, et cetera, like, is that okay for them to hold an event that is violating other people's? I'm just, again, asking.
I think in, in general, if it's, if it's a private event, then they can do- Public event under a special permit. City isn't sponsor of it, probably not liable for that.
Okay.
Where the city could get in more-
Okay. And then I, there was, I had looked at another one that I'm familiar with and they had a rule that there were, that you could not charge an attendance fee to come into an event, so you can't hold an event and charge attendance to it. I don't know if that's something we would want. I don't know if that changes, again, the dynamics of liability and where it lands, but something that I had seen on another.
All the person Bernander.
I got one other idea, too, is what happens if they plug three Nesco's into one outlet and break the breaker and they call and they need someone to come? I mean, would we have some sort of a-
At the park shelters, you have to agree that if you blow a breaker, that's tough toodles.
I'd like to, yeah, because, I mean, it's going to happen. People just love to overload Nesco's on outlets, they, it's just like magnets, so.
Got it.
We'll put Phil's phone number right on the wall.
Okay, yeah. Who's getting the phone call? Go ahead and call.
Noted. Anyone else going once, twice?
All the person Dunahy.
So you had renters shall comply to all state laws and city ordinances regarding the use of alcohol on the premise, so if there's a fundraiser and they're not, you know, they're not selling the alcohol, but they are taking donations, you still have to do a permit?
That is selling, yeah.
Yep. Well. I know, some people try to get, get by on that, but I, the special permit, so I was just questioning on that.
Yeah, yep. I was going to say, I think there's a, a rule about you can't, yeah, you can't do that to get around.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure that people are aware of it.
Great.
Will there be, will there be like a key drop off or?
So, uh, they're anticipating they'll come in advance to pick up a card, so they can tap in and tap out.
Oh, they'll get a card, okay.
And we can turn it off, so if they forget to return it, we don't have to worry about collecting keys.
We also have a keypad. There's a separate entrance specific to the community room itself that can be programmed with different keys that can be wiped clean. As if the key card can be picked up.
Mm-hmm.
Five bucks or whatever.
Oh. Should we just take it out of there?
Yeah, yeah.
Good thought.
No glitter? No.
We're party poopers.
All the person Green.
I guess with the alcohol question, I just, um, don't see there's, there's no smoking or vaping pro, smoking and vaping are prohibited, but is there something in here that says no alcohol on the premises?
No, they would potentially be allowed to have it for their, their event.
If we're having an anniversary party or-
Oh, so if I had a party, I could bring my own booze and-
It's had to abide by all state laws and ordinances.
Yeah.
But there's no sink.
We want alcohol on the property.
There's no sink.
Is there-
Can't pour anything down.
Now, that allows them to go into the hallway to the restrooms, right? There's a certain-
Yes.
This, this would give them access to the main public corridor, which includes both the men's, women's restroom as well as the janitorial. Obviously, they'd, they'd be expected to return it to the state that they founded in that main, having to, to mom.
Responsible for their own snowmobile. For not coming by that. Good machete, too.
Who's going to manage this?
Yeah.
Obie.
Obie.
Obie, okay.
Parks and Rec's building our space.
They're going to take care of the reservations.
All the person Crowley. Oh, okay. All right. Go ahead.
A couple of meetings ago, we were discussing Lady Esther. I'm going to find out Esther got in trouble again and fired from her job. Know what Esther did? Not at the moment, no. Okay. How do we go about revoking her? It's a good topic, but it shouldn't be. Okay. Okay. Yep. Thank you.
All the person Green.
What did you do, Jer?
All the person Wutzl. Any further discussion? Becky, call the roll, please.
Crowley.
Aye.
Dunahy.
Aye.
Green. Paul.
Aye.
Slankert.
Aye.
Tranto.
Aye.
Wutzl. Bernander.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
You saw it coming.
I said, no.